Okay, well, we'll call this meeting to order. Our first on the agenda is a moment of silence. Is there anyone that we should be lifting up tonight? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so we'll feel just bow your head for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Before we go down to the approval of minutes, I just want to let everyone know that our town manager Matt Hoffman will not be joining us tonight. He had taken a week's vacation and unfortunately his flight, believe it or not, was canceled and had to be rescheduled, so he will be hopefully back tonight by midnight. So he'll be back at work, I think, on Wednesday. So you'll need a little recovery from coming in so late. So, all right, so the approval of the minutes, council, you all received a copy of the minutes last week. I believe Nate made one adjustment. I made a couple of additions. So you have the minutes before you. Is there any other changes that need to be made? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve.
I move that we accept the minutes from the December 13th, 2021 Town Council meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Okay, great.
I.
Great. Then the minutes are approved. Thank you, Susan. All right, we will move on down to the next item from the mayor and town council. And that will be the 10619 Connecticut Avenue. The new name is Crossroads at Kensington. So we will, Darren and Connor had a DRB meeting tonight, and Connor is the chair. And Darren is the co-chair, but Connor, I believe, will be leading the meeting.
Yep, so DRB met last week on Tuesday, I believe it was the 4th, to review 10619 Connecticut Avenue, which is the Huggins property within our sector plan. It's where Hawkins is now, former gas station at Plyers Mill in Connecticut. The applicant had filed their application formally with Montgomery County Parks and Planning and has been working with Park and Planning on some of the design elements and architecture as they approach their public hearing date with Park and Planning. So first and foremost, that is currently scheduled for February 3rd. As that gets closer, you know, please check Park and Planning's website and their agenda for the actual time and where it will be on the agenda for that meeting. That is a public meeting. It's open to everybody, but in preparation for that, they came and reviewed their application and the changes with the DRB, most notably within their packet. What they wanted to point out were items of the, you know, the cross-sections of Connecticut Avenue and Plyers Mill, which show how they are incorporating things such as changes to the roadway, the landscape strip, a separated bike lane, buffer and sidewalk. So it shows all of those parts and how they're going to be set up to operate along both of those frontages. The big part is that their building will be more or less situated almost 30 feet from Connecticut Avenue. So it will give quite a big buffer between vehicles and the building, and then their programming will be in that about 12 to 15 feet in front of the building, but with a very activated streetscape. The other main change that they wanted to show was the orientation of a drive-through for a bank. So the bank is the southernmost part of the development, which would be closest to the bridge, the CSX Bridge on Connecticut Avenue. And there is a proposed banking tenant that would go in there, and they have proposed to have a drive-through for that bank. And I want to remind people that Park and Planning and the town have already discussed this with the applicant, and the applicant has already made certain that, you know, there would be no such drive-through for anything other than a bank. It would not be for a restaurant or anything like that. In fact, Park and Planning would not permit it because it would not meet the queuing numbers for that location. But the main change was made to change the direction of traffic flow within that drive-through. And the reason there was that they listened to our input from the town. Mayor Tracy and I had a chance to work with them in Park and Planning. And our deepest concern was that, you know, if there were a number of cars in that queue, that it were to back up and cross either the sidewalk and bike lanes at the curb cut there, or even backup traffic along Connecticut Avenue. So they reversed and changed the flow of traffic so that you would come into the property. If you were going northbound on Connecticut, you'd make a right into the property. You'd go about halfway through their parking lot before you would essentially make a U-turn of sorts to enter that queue for the bank. And that way, they can stack four vehicles within a queue within their drive-through. And if there were yet a fifth or a sixth vehicle, they would then be queued within the parking lot itself and not out toward Connecticut Avenue. We again went through a number of other features, just small architectural changes to increase kind of the square footage of the plazas that they have, both on the east and west side. They're trying to maximize the outdoor space that is usable for outdoor tables and dining, both within what they call the barbell, the connective space between the two buildings, as well as along Plyers Mill and Connecticut Avenue. And what they were looking for in preparation for their public hearing on February 3rd was support from the town. So the DRB reviewed it and voted unanimously to recommend to the council tonight that we support the project and send a letter of support to Montgomery County Park and Planning in advance of the February 3rd public hearing.
Connor, would you be prepared to put any of these, the pictures up on the?
Yeah.
If particularly if somebody has a question, it might be helpful to.
Yep. Let me see, is my screen sharing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so this right here is kind of the southern building. This is the northern building. This is Connecticut Avenue. This is Plyers Mill Avenue. What this is showing here is that, and I'm going to zoom in a little bit. Come on, zoom. There we go. The traffic flow is headed this direction. So a vehicle would enter from Connecticut Avenue, would come in about midway through and then make a U-turn. Likewise, there is an entrance this at the northern, kind of northeastern corner that's accessible through the parking lot where the 7-Eleven is. And you could traverse kind of in a southwesterly direction into the development and then enter. This is that drive-through for the bank. So other things that I had mentioned here are the cross-sections for Connecticut Avenue here at the top. So you'll see it shows four lanes of northbound traffic. This is representing the left turn lane to go westbound on Plyers Mill. These are the two through lanes that are headed north. And this is the right lane, which is both the through lane north, as well as where you would turn east on Plyers Mill towards St. Paul Park. But what this is depicting here is that there is scheduled to be six feet for a landscape strip, or what we call a green buffer, where they will have planted trees, as you see here in the depiction. There would then be an eight-foot-wide separated bike lane. So that would be, usually there's kind of a pylon down the middle, so four feet to head both north and south. Then there would be another three-foot buffer where they would have a second row of smaller trees. There would then be a five-foot-wide public sidewalk, sorry, right here, as well as a 12-foot-wide private sidewalk that is, you know, in the private property and where they would plan to try and activate some of the spaces, you can see here with tables and chairs. So what these two lines show here is the existing public right-of-way, as well as the new eight-foot dedication that is being given by the property owners to account and help to accommodate both the bike lanes and the sidewalks that are needed. So it's just showing that additional dedication here. If I scroll down, this is Plyers Mill Road. Plyers Mill Road is a two-lane road. One lane, the leftmost lane goes east on Plyers Mill, or you can make a left-hand turn. The right lane is dedicated right-hand turn onto Metropolitan. Here, there would be a six-foot-wide landscape strip with tree plantings. Again, the eight-foot separated bike lane, a five-foot-wide public sidewalk, and then a six-foot-wide private sidewalk, again, where they would like to have a little bit of cafe seating.
And just for clarity, is the bike lane, is that happening later? When other development happens, or are they actually going to install something?
No, it's, previously at previous DRBs, they were looking to do it in segments. Here, what they described at the DRB on the 4th is that, no, in consultation with Park and Planning, they will put in the final conditions as a part of their development and construction.
So there will be a bike lane actually there?
There will be the space for the bike lane and how they, you know, whether, you know, how they put up the pylons. But what they're going to be doing is using different contours of concrete so that it's visually, you know, that you can tell what each of the spaces are, is how they described it.
Okay, thank you.
So again, just looking back, the only other major changes here had to do with, again, all of their stormwater systems, how they're catching water. They have a system here, this tank that they described, where in the event of a major rain event, their property will actually be able to capture 100% of the water from their property, hold it within that tank, and then disperse it into the stormwater management system over a period of 48 hours to lessen the impact of a major flash rain event. So, any other questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Connor, thanks for writing that overview. Could you talk a little bit about your follow-up with the developer on the request to pursue LEED Silver certification?
Yes, so, you know, Nate and I were discussing this. At an earlier DRB meeting, the applicant had expressed a desire to go after LEED certification and ideally LEED Silver. So it did not come up in this DRB. I followed up, you know, based on Nate's request, and the developer did say that, you know, at this time, with other costs and other things going on, they weren't planning to go after LEED certification. But they did send a memo over to explain all of the green building items that are going into this building that demonstrate that they, you know, are going to meet or exceed the county requirement for green building. But they did stipulate that at this time, at least as of right now, this moment, they did not want to, they did not want to lead us astray, that they don't plan on going for the certification.
God, thanks. Thanks for that summary. I just guess, what are we, I mean, this is something that I feel very strongly about, that we, you know, we should be asking developers to go beyond the minimum when it comes to green design. I mean, the IGCC, the International Green Construction Code, which Montgomery County has adopted, we all know, that was meant to set a baseline, right? So by them saying that they're going to meet that, or maybe exceed it in some ways, to me is not really that innovative or advanced for a place like we would like to see in Kensington, I believe. So, you know, I was expecting when they wrote back to us, when you shared earlier today, I expected them to kind of do their work and go through it and compare where they were meeting or exceeding green, you know, certification from LEED Silver. But it was really just kind of a list of six or seven things, maybe a few more, where they didn't really show how they were doing that, in my view. So I'd like to see that. I'd like to see a little effort, if they're not going to pursue it, to support it, to have my support, to actually show that they've done their homework or spent at least a couple of hours and compared where they think they're exceeding the LEED certification. My understanding is from you, Connor, is that they felt that their margins weren't going to be large enough to be able to pursue the cost of the certification, because it can get a little pricey, right? So, you know, if that's the case, then at least, you know, showing that they think that they're in principle or practice doing it anyway, that's great, but a quick list isn't saying anything, to be honest.
Okay. I mean, is there anything specific that you want to, I mean, any action you want to take, Nate?
No, I mean, not an action, but I guess, so I recognize the county is a little bit confusing right now because there's the Climate Action Plan that we heard about in October. There are all these new pieces of legislation or regulations that are coming from the council, from the county council likely to align and pursue the Climate Action Plan, including things like net-zero building standard that would very much so exceed the IGCC code. In addition to green building performance standards, all electricity construction. There are a lot of things in there that they could at least commit to doing, which would not be, you know, it would be kind of in advance of the county itself passing the legislation, but it's, you know, the writings on the wall. They're going to do this in the next year or two. So at least signaling that they want to do that if they can't pursue it because it's an expensive and cumbersome certification process. I think that would be a great signal to send to the town.
Okay.
So other than certification, I mean, do you support the project in principle, or?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, in principle. And I completely understand and sympathize about, you know, if it's just too costly to do the certification. This is a unique property. We all know it's a really challenging property, right? I don't want it to, you know, to get held out on that issue that it's not specifically LEED certified. But in principle and practice, they could and should be doing more than is just required in the IGCC.
Okay.
And that's the way the county is moving. They'll be there if this project was there in a year or two, they'd probably have to adhere to a higher standard. So I just feel like showing us something that's a little more than just a quick list of seven or eight things that they identified. But overall, yes, I think it's a, I think it's a great project. I think it's fantastic. They're adding the bike lanes. I know that we've come back and forth on this issue of whether you build a bike lane to nowhere or you just wait until the rest of the infrastructure is there to do it all at once. And I think a clear message coming out of the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group of the Mobility and Traffic Committee is that, yeah, build it when you can. And I think that's what the argument that prevailed at the county level, too, is that they want to see this network starting to be built, even if people like Darren, maybe myself sometimes, would never want to see a cyclist on Connecticut Avenue in their lifetime. I think that that's, you know, that's what at least the bicycling master plan calls for. So overall, I think it's, you know, I think it's a great project, I wish they'd go, you know, that extra mile on the green design.
Because certainly a letter can, I don't, I think that their planning meeting was a February 3rd, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can reach out to them again, but I think a letter could certainly be crafted, basically saying what you just said, that, you know, here's what we support. Here's what we're very disappointed in, and we would like to see all information.
Yep.
And, yeah, I mean, like I said, back in the April letter, April 21, you know, at that time, they had stated that they would be interested in going for LEED Silver because they heard it from us. But this time, you know, they've just said, you know, they're trying to evaluate all the costs because obviously we hear everywhere, construction costs are going up. I think for the timing of tonight, what I'd like to ask on, you know, taking up the DRB's action of recommending a letter of support, that we draft that letter of support, but with a carve-out like me or Tracy was indicating that, you know, we would like to see them re, you know, relook at the LEED Silver certification. And I think between now and then, you know, I would be happy to reach back out to them to try and, Nate, to your point, get, you know, a letter with more detail around the specificity of what they're doing with the IGCC and talk to them a little bit more about our position prior to the February 3rd public meeting.
Okay, I don't know if the council has any more questions. Otherwise, I'll open it up to the people who have had their hands up, so.
I'll just make a quick comment before, because I'm feeling a little bit of an information deficit. I mean, I feel like I know a lot about some parts of this, but not so much about the nitty-gritty. LEED is obviously something that is, has marketed itself really well. It is a private certification where you pay money to consultants to certify your compliance with one of four levels, be they basic, silver, gold, or platinum. And then there are competing standards for certifying buildings or complying buildings. There's IGCC, there's something called Green Globes. And in some ways, they are competing standards in the market of, you know, environmental sustainability. LEED happens to be the most well-known and the most popular. And I guess the analogy I would draw is that, and I'll just pick on Ohio because I live there. In Ohio, where IGCC is not a requirement, you may want to highlight that your building complies with the standard. So you may give money to consultants with LEED so that they certify your building and that you can put a plaque out front that says, you know, this is LEED Silver. But in Montgomery County, where we have adopted the IGCC as a minimum, it would be useful either for this project or for future projects to know whether, where in the overall benefit from the measures that you're implementing, complying with IGCC falls relative to LEED basic or LEED silver. And so for this particular project, well, okay, good, because I'm going to give you a second question. We have an environmental practice at my firm. I often do work. We love environmental impact statements. We love NEPA because it brings in fees for my firm. We don't contribute one iota, though, to making the environment cleaner. We are simply, we are lawyers or we hire consultants, and so there's a process. And for this project, for example, if I had two choices, one is hiring consultants to enable the developer to put a plaque out front that says LEED Silver, that's option A. Or option B, take that solar-ready roof and put the same money into deploying solar on that roof, I would clearly pick the latter, because the first is process that has no benefit and the second is a benefit. And so I just, I think it's useful for us to sort of lay out for the future, what is our goal? Sorry, Nate, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may respond, I could not agree with you more. You know, like I said, the, just, the point I made is that I, I think it's silly to quibble about a certification process just for the sake of it getting certified and having a plaque. But given our current situation in Montgomery County, IGCC is the baseline. It's actually developed by the International Green Building Council as well. They're a big partner of it. The people who developed LEED have developed IGCC, too. It's a different but related process. It's codes, right? LEED certification is more of an encompassing design ethic, I guess. And they're meant to work together. So to your first question, or your first point, as the way I've described it to Connor in the past, is they're kind of like a horse race. IGCC is meant to set the baseline, get out of the gate. LEED is, you know, is that horse that's out in front. The platinum is way out in front, gold and silver, you know, a little bit further back. And then that's where a county or a local jurisdiction, municipality or town can set, you know, a requirement or push for, like we have, the LEED certification, which is above and beyond. But there's a moving target at all times. So in 2021 or 22, the council for the fiscal year, the county councils endeavor to pass the new green building code, the 2021 version or the 2022 version. And that will, of course, be more stringent than the 2018 version they previously passed. That may actually get to where LEED Silver was three years ago. But in so doing, it gets ramped up for what LEED certified Silver would be. So they kind of work hand-in-hand to kind of push each other to better design. And I don't think that, I think what we're interested in here in the town is seeing results. So that was my point, that if they're going to be able to do something that's more, that's above the IGCC and show that they're making that effort, at least show us what it is and, you know, beyond a quick list. And I'm happy, I think that would be a completely satisfying outcome, again, given the landscape they're facing. There's IGCC, there are all these other performance standards, the net-zero building, the electrical, full electrification of commercial and multi-use buildings that is coming down the pike. And that's why we asked Sandy Brecker, and I forget the other woman's name, who presented to us in October, to give us like some guidance for how we guide the DRB and the developers through this process for what we are suggesting. How do these relate to one another? I think there will be more clarity coming, and we need to work with the county on what, what package we suggest or what paths they pursue. But for now, the only two things we have are LEED and IGCC that are recognizable. I know there's, you know, the Green Globe or whatever else you've said. But that's why I think that's a situation that we're in right now. But I fully agree, we should be asking for more guidance from the county on what we can recommend to get, you know, to really get them to pay attention to this issue.
Okay, Bridget, I think you said you didn't have any questions. Is that correct? Okay, so I'm going to open it up to the people who have their hands up. Claudia, do you want to go?
Yes, please. Thanks, Tracy. So first of all, I just wanted to add my support to more specificity on the idea of green building. I think we really need to understand on a specific level what it is they are doing in order to improve the building from an energy and green standpoint. And whether it's certified or not, I think it's important for us to have some kind of measuring sticks, and if LEED is a reasonable measuring stick against which to understand what they're doing. So I think that that's a great idea to make that an addendum to the town letter, saying we really need some detail on that. The second thing is something that Connor was talking about a bit, which is the ingress and egress at 7-Eleven and the whole involvement of Metropolitan Avenue. I think we all know that that's an exceedingly messy intersection as it is with that little median in it and the fact that, you know, my concern has been people are going to get routed off onto Metropolitan who want to come back to Connecticut, and it's going to be sort of a nightmare. So I'm wondering if there's been any discussion about how that's going to be handled. And yeah, Connor, if you want, maybe you can jump in and show me that. I'm, as someone who lives down the road there, it's concerning.
Connor, you're on mute.
There we go. So I've got multiple monitors and my controls left when I shared the screen. Yeah, to Claudia's point, so one of the things that the applicant brought up that was, you know, the town, I think, thinks this is a positive and Park and Planning thinks it is very much positive, is that this property is going to close off three current curb cuts. There's currently two curb cuts on Connecticut Avenue and two curb cuts on Plyers Mill that access this property. The southernmost one will remain, that's the right in, right out from Connecticut Avenue. They are closing this one here, and they are closing both of the curb cuts along Plyers Mill. And in doing so, though, to, you know, for fire and safety, as well as just egress and loading, what they are doing is getting a access agreement to the 7-Eleven property. This is, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. So what they've shown now, if you go to 7-Eleven currently, this is kind of where the dumpsters are currently. They'll move those dumpsters, you know, further kind of southwest on that property. They'll create a lane that now allows access between the two parking lots. And then there will be now an egress/ingress here along Metropolitan.
Oh, my God. Well, how do you expect, three cars are going to be blocked at 7-Eleven, come out to Metropolitan, and that's going to be it? It's going to be a nightmare. I don't see how cars come out. If you come out onto Metropolitan, you've got to make a right. And there's going to be lots of people that don't want to do that, and it's going to be ugly.
I mean, I'm not, yeah, go ahead, Darren. I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna admit, yeah, go ahead, Darren.
I I raised this question with with them at the DRB because, um, I'm somebody that frequently goes to the 7-Eleven, I live north of there. So when I come out of 7-Eleven, I want to go left, which is, you know, as you know, is difficult. And so I I I their response, which I I tend to agree with, is, um, the 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 use of this cut through, um, is going to be, um, fluid, meaning uh, I may learn that if I happen to go to the, whatever, the bank or this building, I may learn that to get back to Pliers Mill and head eastbound on it, rather than going, cutting through 7-Eleven, I'm going to find it makes more sense for me to leave onto Connecticut, turn right onto Pliers Mill, because that puts me where I want to go. You're right, Claudia, absolutely. The 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 ideal use of that cut through would be for people that want to turn right onto Metropolitan. But what what the response was is we will watch this lane. We will, um, we may have to revisit how we use it. We don't, you know, right. You you live up there, too.
Yep.
You know that when the gas station was there, when that light on northbound Connecticut turned red, you would get cars cutting through the gas station.
They still do, they cut through the light.
They still do, less so now because there's mulch and firewood. But they they cut through to avoid the light.
Yep.
And use one of those exits that's going to be closed off now. So for me, from my perspective, hallelujah, they're they're cutting off some of the workaround for that light, which I think leads to road rage. Um, but what they said is they need to manage this pass-through lane, and they will watch to see what happens. If if it's not in their interest to create the backup that you envision, because you will have people going from 7-Eleven to Baskin Robbins and Manny's, who can't use the, can't go there anymore because there's too much exit exiting traffic.
Exactly. Exactly, exactly. And I don't see how you avoid it. You got more car.
You may cut it off, you may cut it off.
Okay.
Because if it's that much of a disaster, it's in no neither property's interest to keep it going.
Okay.
And and the only people using it are people who are not even going to either building, but they're trying to avoid the light at Connecticut and Pliers Mill. Then it it's in nobody's interest to keep that open.
My concern is, is that here's what happens. As new businesses, maybe some people are coming that aren't totally familiar, and they want to get back to Connecticut, but they end up at Metropolitan, and they then think they can somehow make a a left there, and then all hell breaks loose. I'm that that's my concern, because of the because of the traffic median there. Anyway.
You may find signage in the parking lot that says, exit back to Connecticut, this way towards Connecticut itself.
Okay, well.
Honestly, I think that Metropolitan to Pliers Mill exit will be incredibly inefficient for those people.
Okay, I I I hope, I mean, I'm 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 registering concern. It sounds like you've registered concern as well, and it's something that we'll all keep our eye on. And then the third quick point that I wanted to ask about is have there been any further discussions about design and materials? I know that came up a great deal in October. Um, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but I have to admit that I thought that the design was painful for any number of reasons. Has anything been done about that at all?
So as described in the DRB last week, yes, in working with Park and Planning, a couple of of changes have been made to the design and architecture. One was, man, I'm not an architect, somebody's going to yell at me. But they, the way they differentiate between what the different retail bays is they had different sections kind of jutted out, right? Kind of like, almost like a bay window, um, to create differentiation. So, okay, you know, that's business one, and the one that's set back a little bit is business two, and the one over here is business three. And what Park and Planning, because there was a lot of back and forth about a primary, uh, desire of ours and of the applicants was to create activated street skate so that we can have tables and chairs and outdoor dining. But that had to fit in with not just the separated bike lanes, but with those bike lanes, there are minimum standards for each of the buffers that have to go there. So, you know, six foot by the roadway and three feet between bike and a sidewalk. So every foot starts to count. And so one of the things they realized was, let's not differentiate the different faces of the bays because at the bays that are jutted out, you're going to lose a foot to 18 inches. So let's differentiate through materials. The other thing that Park and Planning, uh, asked that they not do is any of the, uh, cementitious boarding, you know, hardy board as a design, because they they had a fear that it would degrade faster than, say, brick. So they've asked them to go to brick. But this being a building that really, there's going to be two fronts to it because the parking lot side of it, the eastern side of the building is an access point, but the west side is the street-facing point.
Yeah.
They have, what they've come back on a design is they're just doing brick around the whole building. And then they will differentiate by color.
Is it going, because the other, the other thing that really I found disturbing, honestly, was they seem to be in this same realm of dark brown kind of brick as the, uh, Union Building, which, you know, is probably one of the uglier buildings in Montgomery County, but that could be quite a contest. Um, I just, I'm concerned that we have, you know, for instance, the original building there sort of had that mid-century modern kind of roof line that was interesting. We have other things around there, like the fire station that are more traditional. This thing just struck me as having no style, other than being very dark. And so I I just, you know, I I'm I'm bothered by that. Are they still doing the big sail in the middle?
Uh, there will be, let me see if I can, they've toned it down, um, but raised it up a little bit to accommodate, uh, how the building is connected. This was all done in conjunction with Park and Planning. But you can see here, there's still a parapet here at the middle that is, you know, to help create the, what I, I'm using this term because they use this term, this kind of barbell here.
Yes.
So this will have glass over it, but here is kind of a a plaza section out by Connecticut Avenue. Here's a plaza section, uh, off the rear, the east side where the parking is. This will be covered, but these two parapets here just help to create definition in those, uh, two spaces, create the the connective tissue between the two buildings.
Is there anything that actually shows materials that's online that we can view or anything?
There should be something in the filing, but I'm pretty sure there was a picture in color, and it does show different textures and different colors along the building. So it's not just, it's not 100% brick.
If if you could.
And that color.
Yeah, I'd love to see a link to that, just because I, you know, again, we all have different tastes, but boy, I thought that original design was painful.
No, it was too much brick, it was too much brown brick. But I'm pretty sure that that other design had some, uh, different colors in it. So we can look for that and send that and post it on the website.
That's it for me. Thank you so much.
Uh, Tracy, to that point, they also did an animation. I will ask them to share that video animation, and we will post that onto our, the town's website as well and let people know. So that is a 3D modeling from all angles.
And then maybe then where I saw the different colors was on that. Okay. I'm sure we can get a hold of that without any problem.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Uh, Jack, I think you were next.
Thank you. Um, in general, I like the project very much. I particularly like the feature that there's a buffer between Connecticut Avenue and Pliers Mill and the sidewalks. The way it is now, the snow pile puts, has to put the snow on the sidewalk, but it snows, when it rains many times, the cars go by, there's flash people that are on the sidewalk. So I like it in general, and I like that feature especially.
Good. Thank you, Jack.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Chris, uh, any questions?
Hi, thanks. Um, yeah, just want to, I'm super excited about the bike lanes on Pliers Mill. So it's great that they have that there. Just want to second the concerns about the Metropolitan Pliers Mill intersection. It's a mess, uh, uh, abomination also came to mind. Um, and I wonder, as part of any of the recent discussions, if there was talk about trying to improve the intersection in conjunction with this project? I know Nate has raised that previously, and I'm curious if there was any update on that.
Sadly, uh, between the state and the county, I'm not sure who moves slower because everything has to be studied to death, but they they, it is on their radar.
Okay.
But it will be a constant need of reminding that they promised us, uh, some relief there.
Right, and I think the fair, a fair way to say it is it's not just this one property owner's intersection to fix, but, uh, the town has brought it up with the state and county to say, maybe it's time to revisit the light slash stop sign slash abomination that we have going here.
So that's good, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, it's unfortunate the the timing, we just got this, the the clear message from SHJ that it would be beyond the life of when this project is implemented. But we can, we will keep pushing because I see the, some, there's a message in the chat from Amy also about us, a circle. We raised the issue of a circle or divided intersections. You saw the idea, Chris, to separate the two intersections, so we'll we'll keep on advocating.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in that intersection and, yeah. Okay, um, I'm not seeing any other hands. So I think, uh, all right, I'm going to bring it back to the council, um, I'm hearing, uh, I don't know, we should probably make a motion to send a letter that will be drafted. Um, Connor, I guess, uh, you'll draft a letter and work with Nate on making sure the language uh, to cover the concerns that have been already mentioned today. Um, and we'll circulate that and send it, but if you want to make a motion.
So on behalf of the DRB, I I move that we send a letter of support for the project, uh, the crossroads at Kensington at 10619 Connecticut Avenue to be addressed to, uh, Montgomery County Park and Planning in advance of the February 3rd public hearing to incorporate, uh, those concerns discussed this evening.
Okay. All right, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so let's move on to, uh, number two, the proposed charter res, uh, revision for voter qualification. Uh, I don't know, Darren, whether you or Nate wants to start that conversation.
I'm happy to start, Nate, unless you'd like to.
Go for it.
Okay, so so we're not formally introducing this tonight simply because we didn't have time to sort of a- ask our lawyer to put the bells and whistles on a charter revision and include the whereas clauses. But I think to the extent that we can, um, get people thinking about the issue, uh, and we can hopefully, you know, at multiple meetings, um, get people thinking and and, you know, deciding if this is what we want to do, or if there, if we want to be more restrictive or less restrictive. So our goal here is simply to put out what I would consider to be a moderate revision to the qualifications for elections. Um, I've spent a lot of time, and Nate has looked at these as well, looking at, um, municipalities in other jurisdictions. Uh, some simply eliminate the citizenship requirement and, um, just ba- basically make you be a resident 18 years or older. And that's sort of, um, ambiguous as to who who would qualify then. Other municipalities, I think Glen Echo is one of them, listed the entire realm of people that they were trying to drag in, which would be permanent resident all the way down to the refugee. Um, or the undocumented. My sense from the survey that we did of residents was that, uh, we had a a a 50/50 split approximately of people who were in favor of expanding the eligibility and opposed. But we also got a a message that if we perhaps were a little more refined as to how we were expanding the eligibility, that we would have more people supporting that. So the way we expanded its language is to say that if you are a permanent resident, a green card holder, or if you had authorization to work, that you would be entitled, and you're also a resident and and 18 years or older, that you would be entitled to vote in our municipal elections. I think those are things that are, um, manageable by town staff to evaluate. You know, we, whenever we hire a new person, we have to evaluate whether they are eligible to work. And, um, a green card is fairly easy to to look at and figure out if somebody has. So it seemed to be a a fairly good, um, at least for me, starting point of what is it that, you know, where do we want to start? And then what are other members of the council and the public think as far as whether it should be, uh, more restrictive or less restrictive? So we're putting the language out there to give people more time to think about it and comment rather than simply proposing it in at the temporary meeting. Anything to add, Nate?
No, no, I think it's just, just very quick, one thing really quickly, just to to clarify, wasn't already, um, implied. You you mentioned that it's lawful permanent resident or authorized work in the United States or a citizen already of the United States. That's that's part of the the code that's not changing, the citizen already.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions you want to follow up on?
Yeah, so, um, is is it the intent of this language basically to make it so, yes, green card, obviously, but then also say J8 or somebody who, you know, maybe doesn't have the attainment of a green card yet, but is here working legally? Yes.
So I don't want to pretend to be an immigration lawyer because I've been forced into this role occasionally at my work. Um, if you are applying for a green card, though, I know that you can, and prior to your getting it, you can obtain an employment authorization document. So that would be one class. I I know that there are a number of other categories where people can come here through, like you said, the J8 category, where they would be authorized to work. I think, at least what I was looking for when we were drafting this was, are you somebody who is sort of committed to town uh, and committed to being here on a slightly more than an an itinerant basis? And so that's, that's where I introduced the work authorization. It went beyond the green card, because green cards are a little bit hard to obtain.
Yeah.
Um, and and this just expanded it more into the realm of somebody who might be here because, you know, like they're an alien extraordinary ability, or there are various categories that.
Genius visa, yeah.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, love my husband, though I do, definitely not a genius. I mean, it took him, like, sort of like 20 years, you know, to get the green card. So I just, I want to, I want to be inclusive of folks who maybe have every intent of being here. Um, but and are allowed to be here, but maybe just need that, um, next step.
Right, and and so, you know, there's, there's obviously, it's a lot of, what we're looking for is input from the public and and from from the council. Um, you could be a US citizen and renting here for six months before you move somewhere else, and you will have an easy time voting. Um, I got the sense from people offline and through the survey that they, you know, at least if we're expanding it to non-citizens, that we wanted maybe a little bit more of an indication of a, of a commitment to or or dedication coming part of informed about town issues.
Yeah.
With that, I guess where I'm thinking about it is the role of the clerk and staff of trying to make that determination. So a green card, I think, agreed is easy, they can demonstrate, you know, here is the green card. They can, it can be a document that can be examined. But when we talk about things like H1B visa, uh, and other certain visas, that whether you're in au pair or you are some sort of, uh, doctor at the NIH, to to make it manageable for staff, how do we write this so that it is understood, you know, when to, um, grant somebody a ballot and when not to?
And that's where I think.
Sorry.
No, I was going to say USCIS is fairly explicit on your visa of when you can work and when you cannot work. And so if you have an EAD, the Employment Authorization Document, it says that you are authorized to work. And and so that, yes, Connor, that is exactly what I was looking for is not creating an additional hurdle. I don't know, I mean, we probably don't have that many people in town that are looking to do this, but not creating a a huge discretion or judgment call for for town staff to have to endure.
The other one, sorry, this is pivoting a little bit, uh, but around.
And by the way, let's just, let's just remind everybody, we are not introducing this tonight. This is just a general discussion.
Um, the other one I had was around the 30 days language, which ironically is what it is now. But, um, let's say you were 18 and 19 and you're still living here and voting just fine. Then you. Then you leave to go to college, you register at your university, but you come back home. You know, you, you come back to town, maybe you're living with your folks, or maybe you've, you know, found a place to live here. Is thirty days is from the, they re-register? I mean, if they lived here for years but left for a little while and now come back, is it a, you know, I, I believe the intent is the thirty days consecutively before the election.
Connor, do you mean like if a child of someone who is here from another country working, or do you just mean any college students?
No, because this goes to all qualifications you need to be able to vote. One of them is you have to be eighteen, one of them is you're either citizen or documentation status that we just talked about. But one of them is you have to have been a resident of the town for thirty days. And so it's a question of, you could have been a resident till eighteen nineteen, then maybe you did a couple of years at, at Montgomery County College, but then you leave and you go to wherever, University of Florida, and you register to vote down there for a couple of years. Then you come back. The clock should restart.
So we've had to deal with this before.
Isn't the scope of this only be applied to legal permanent residents?
No, I think, no, it's a qualification of a voter.
So, so the confusion is that we included the whole language of that part of the, of the section of the charter, right? So that was already in existence.
Right.
So we've had to deal with that issue already. So we can, we just added the underlying part, which is the addition.
Yeah, right, we're really, the point of tonight was to focus on it. Yeah.
The Board of Election Supervisors, how they've dealt with it. Right, or how the staffs have dealt with it, because I'm sure it's.
I guess, to take a step back, let me put it this way, if we're going to touch this part of the charter at all, do we want to address that as well?
Darren, you, do you know more about this than I do, but I always, always thought that intent to make your, like, intent to make your home somewhere, so like your residency was kind of ephemeral and a little bit harder to, to prove than just the thirty days in residence. Like, for example, we have people in the Pitchfork who live in the Pitchfork, but their residency is not Maryland. It's whatever town they came from before. So, you know, they haven't lived in that, that state in years. So I'm wondering, I mean, this might just be above our pay grade in the sense that this might already be hashed out, but I think Sue Allen would probably know that better than, than me at least.
So you're saying to maybe for people who are maybe military or?
Yeah.
Okay.
College students. And I, I don't think, I, I would prefer not to address that. I, I think if, if I saw a, a, a material impact, I might say, well, sure, let's open that up too. And I think the, the games that people, college students play with respect to residency comes not in June municipal elections, but in November presidential elections where, since we're a dark blue state, their vote is sort of wasted here. And if they're going to college in a purple state, they're going to remake themselves residents where they go to college and then they're going to vote in that state with the hope of swaying the election there. I, I just don't see enough of motivation and, you know, in my view, the, the, the survey was resident versus non, not citizen versus non-citizen, I would just like to keep it simple as to how much we expand it and, and leave the thirty day provision, you know? Because nobody's complained about the thirty day provision being, you know.
An issue.
Well, we were considering all of the changes Darren before, remember, I think some members of the Board of Election Supervisors told us that, or maybe it was town staff, it was Matt, or town manager, told us that they actually mail a lot of ballots, end up mailing ballots to people who are residing currently somewhere else, if it's even not military. And high likelihood, those never, never get returned in time, but they still mail them out. So I think they have, we have a method for dealing with it and it didn't strike me that it was a material concern, but it's a good point.
And how many do we mail overseas? Do you remember?
You're muted.
Um, not that many, but those are the mailing addresses and that's how they registered with Montgomery County. So we have to mail it there, but no, we didn't get, we don't get them back. Um, but on the thirty days, if they're registered with the county, then they're picked up on our list. And if they're just coming back into town or something like that, they would use the supplemental registration and they would sign that they've been here thirty days. And I don't think we question it because it's, they're certifying that they've been here thirty days.
Okay.
All right, um, council, does you have any more discussion about it before I open it up? Doesn't look like it. Jack, do you have a question?
Um, I have a comment.
Okay.
But I have two comments.
Okay.
First, it's my recollection that the vote was not fifty fifty, a small majority opposed this change.
I think it was forty nine fifty one, you are correct.
Right, so I, I, it's misleading to say it was fifty fifty. Secondly, um, my wife and I opposed this change because we believe that voting should be a right of citizens. Many people, a reason why many people who are permanent residents become citizens is so that they can vote.
Okay.
Yeah, and so again, I like, I like it the way it is that you, the, the, the right of voting should be restricted to citizens.
Okay.
Period.
Thank you for your comment. Joe?
Yes, thank you Mayor Furman, I appreciate taking the, uh, taking the floor here. I'm agnostic really about the, uh, the wisdom of expanding the franchise in this manner. What I principally object to, and, uh, you know, Mr. Gaffey just mentioned it as well, is, is the continued misinterpretation of the townwide survey. It cannot be spun as a fifty fifty outcome because it wasn't. And as a result, because it was a minority who favored this, uh, it really makes me wonder whether there is a, a mandate at all for the town to move ahead with the charter revision, to reimagine the civic requirement for democratic participation if townspeople opposed it in a poll. And narrowly perhaps, but nonetheless, it was pretty clear that a majority did not favor this. So you can't really spin it as a fifty fifty split. And if you were to take that logic and say, oh, it's fifty fifty, it's close enough, we should move ahead anyway. By that logic, the outcome of, of a very closely contested town council race in twenty seventeen would have had the loser being declared a winner as well. And that was a very, very close race in which Tom Rodriguez did not win reelection by three votes, by three votes. He won forty nine point six percent of the vote that was cast, but did not win reelection, even though it was a very, very narrow outcome. So I think we should respect the outcome of this poll as akin to that of, of the, of the town election in twenty seventeen, where it was a very close outcome. Tom Rodriguez lost and was widely regarded as, as a narrow but clear defeat. And I think the similar situation with the poll makes it very clear that there is not a, a mandate for this across the town. So I really don't understand where the impetus for this is coming from. We spent, you know, a good deal of money to have a survey and then we disregard the results of the survey or, or spin the results in a misinterpretation, in a way that misinterprets the results. So I've sensed no groundswell for an expansion of the franchise along these lines. And I just wonder what, what's the motive here? Is it to boost turnout in town elections? Is, is that the reason why we're, we're debating this matter? What's, what, what, what's behind this? I'm really unclear about that.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyone on the?
Let me try to give a quick summary because I, I just want to remind everybody that we are not, this is not the public hearing. We're just giving you an extra month to think about it and come up with your comments. And so we aren't creating a record. So come back next month or submit an email. You know, I think every instance when I said the outcome of the survey, I said about fifty fifty, which is accurate. And so if it's fifty one forty nine, you don't got me because I didn't say. So come back next month. And we don't have to follow through on this. We, we took a survey that was, we said a hundred times was non-binding, informational, and we got information. And some of that information suggested that if we change the regular, if we change the proposal from all non-citizens to some subset of non-citizens, that the support for might be greater. If, if not, then we'll hear that through the public process. But what we're not, what I'm not going to do is I'm not going to make a decision in the dark without public process. And so I'm proposing, but as soon as we can get sort of the formal bells and whistles put on this, that we'll put it out for public consideration. We'll listen to people, we'll use our own jud, own judgment about how we feel the electorate should be, you know, reflected. And if we're wrong, then I'll lose by three votes in the next election I'm up at. And Tommy Rodriguez will be the next council member. That's what elections are about, is holding us accountable. So do it, come, come vote in June.
I don't think Tommy lives in town and I may be wrong about that.
No, he doesn't.
I'll invite him back, I'll invite him back so he can have.
Maybe we could have a charter revision that would allow for non-residents to stand for town council. I'm seriously though, what is the driving motive behind this measure? I mean, um, no one seems to be able to explain it very clearly as to what's, what's pushing this. What's, is, is it to boost turnout at the town elections? Is, is that it? Or what, what's, what's behind this? What's the driving force, the motive?
Does anybody else want to handle it or I'll give a quick?
I'm, I'm trying to.
We have some long-term residents in town who are active in town, active with town issues. They just happen to be from Ireland or Canada, but they own houses, they own businesses. They're as much a resident of this town, as much a part of our community as I am. And, and so I at least want there to be consideration of do we expand it to people like them? That, that's my perspective, that's why I'm going to continue to push forward with this.
Do you have any sense of the numbers that we're talking about here? What, what is the N? Is it ten, is it twenty, is it a hundred?
It, it's a small, small number.
I would, I would say probably less than ten at this point.
That would be.
Less than ten?
At this point, yeah.
Thank you Mayor Furman, that seems like an awful small number to be, you know, I don't, to, to drive a charter revision. I may be wrong about this. As I say, I'm agnostic about the, the, the wisdom of expanding the franchise this way. But it seems like fewer than ten is, is, is a, is a pretty small number.
Well, you would be amazed at how many municipalities actually have, allow people that are non-citizens to vote. And a lot of it is because they are property owners. In some of the, and not to get, uh, in the, in the more expensive neighborhoods, they are allowed to vote. Tacoma Park allows their residents to vote that are non-citizens, that's maybe a different segment. But, um, it is getting to be more and more that in these, the lowest of low of local politics that people are now being able to participate. So.
I'm sorry, I know everybody says don't take debate, but I'm going to take debate. Because I, I think if we were talking about national, I think if we were talking about national elections where our constitution and citizenship actually was, you know, in play, I might agree with you. But if, if our view is, um, we, we want to keep the roads paved and plowed and parks clean, citizenship is irrelevant to that. You know, whether you're a citizen or of Canada or the U S, I think you want a voice in those very local issues. If you want to decide who's going to be president of the United States, then maybe it makes sense to be a citizen of the United States. But that's not us, we're just doing elections that are, as you point out, decided by very low turnout. I don't mind expanding it to a couple more people. But, but again, public process next month.
Council, any more additions to that? Uh, Jack, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were waving again, go ahead.
I, I strongly agree with what Joe Campbell just said. I see, you know, don't understand why they keep pushing this. I'd like, I'd like to remind you that the other question in the survey was to allow, uh, so, uh, but sixteen and seventeen year olds to vote. That also lost by a small majority and the issue was dropped.
I think that margin was a little bit bigger, but I'm, I'm not going to guess what that margin was.
Not much, it was a few, it was a few percent.
Seventy thirty.
The other thing I see.
Seventy thirty, is that correct?
Seventy, it was seventy thirty opposed.
That's, that's a big margin, Jack.
Okay. I, I thought it was closer, but the, but the point is that, that, that the, the majority opposed that in the, in the survey and the issue got dropped. I guess the other thing I see in this, in this discussion is it's sort of a slippery slope. Well, do we include people that are permanent, you know, permanent residents? Do we include people who aren't permanent residents to have an authorization to work? I mean, it, it, it just keeps getting stretched. I think that's a slippery slope. As, as I said initially, I, I believe that the privilege of, of voting should be restricted to citizens, period.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Right, council, anyone else? Go ahead, Bridget.
Uh, so I just want to real briefly speak to what Jack was saying because I do empathize, right? The idea that there's a process, you should follow the process as far as gaining citizenship and, you know, that's, that's the, you know, sort of prize at the end. I will say that if you look now as opposed to even twenty or thirty years ago, it takes forever to go through that process. People die waiting to get through it. And if in some very small way, we can, you know, kind of correct that in a, on a very low level, just in town, um, I don't think that's a bad thing to make it more inclusive and to take the people that we see every day and work with and have relationships with every day who are invested in this town and make sure that they have a say in the process. You know, it's, we're not talking about, you know, getting social security. We're, we're talking about people who own houses here who want to be able to come and participate with us.
Okay, uh, Joe, is your hand up again or is this just checking?
It is, thank you Mayor Furman. I think we, we should keep in mind too, that this survey that we keep referring to, not only was not fifty fifty on this question, but it was a very small number of townspeople who participated in, in the survey. I think it was, um, fewer than four hundred people. And I believe that the outcome, that, that translates to perhaps twenty percent of eligible voters in town. Alex would have the numbers, but nonetheless, it's a very small, uh, survey, uh, response rate to this survey. And, uh, we're, we're basing this move on a very, very thin. In fact, I, I don't see a mandate at all because the survey clearly indicated that less than half of the people were in favor of this and the, the, the response rate was, was very small, was minimal. So a twenty six percent response rate is, you know, is, it's not, it's not a healthy response rate for, for a town survey like this. And, uh, you know, so I, again, I'm, I'm just really unclear as to what's driving this, this issue. There's an awful lot of attention being paid to it, awful lot of, by the council, an awful lot of time being consumed by this. And it's, it's, you know, for, for, for a small number of people, I don't, I don't, I just don't get it. I just don't really understand the, the logic behind this and why we're, why we're moving now. Unless it's an attempt to stimulate turnout in the June election. But I, I can't see that that is a, is a real motivating factor either, so. Thanks Mayor Furman.
Okay.
Let me respond to Joe real quick because I think you could very much turn your argument on its head from the opposing perspective and say, you know, such a close margin is not reason to do away with this issue, right? It's, it's only, it's all about your perspective. You've made the point many times that this was not a representative survey, survey, the response rate is low. It was for exactly the purpose of gathering information, right? And I feel, and I think most of the council feels, that we've gathered a considerable amount of information and learned. And I feel, and I think most of the council feels, that we've gathered a considerable amount of information and learned from this survey that it's worth continuing this discussion because nearly half of the respondents responded in favor of it. More than half of them responded opposed with some qualifications. So let's continue the discussion. I think John Gerson's point in the chat is a really important one. Doesn't matter if it helps one person vote or 100. If you're going to enfranchise people, give them the opportunity to do it. I think Darren's points, Bridget's points are really, really important here. So if we, you know, I think we learned about the age question. That was pretty clear. There's not really appetite to continue that discussion. That's why we dropped it. But I, I don't, I don't know what else we can say for why we think it's worth pursuing this conversation in an open, public process. This is how a charter revision happens. It gets discussed. It's open. You take time to debate it. And that's what we're doing here. So that's why the process is devoted a much amount, a significant amount of time to it.
Hey, thanks. Uh, you know, I understand the charter revision process. I mean, thanks, but I, it's pretty clear. I just don't understand. I thought you might weigh in with, with some very clear explanation as to, you know, the, the motivating factor or force here uh, as to why we're, you know, devoting a lot of time to something that, that fewer than half of the survey respondents felt was a good idea. And I, I, I'm sorry, Nate, I just don't see, I don't see the um, clear rationale to be pursuing this at this time. And uh, you know, I, I understand some of the arguments in favor of this in general of expanding the franchise. Okay? I, I get that. That's not my concern right now. I'm agnostic on that point. What I am, what I don't understand is, is what is behind this? What is the motive? What is the motivating factor for the town to spend as much time? Is because other towns are doing it? It's because of the June election? I don't know. I mean, I, I'm at a loss and none of those explanations seem to be very plausible to me.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Uh, Clint? You had your hand up?
I did. Hi, everyone. I, I, thanks for taking the question. I guess my reaction to this is uh, I was really kind of heartened when I saw that the survey went out. I think it's a good question to ask. The question that I would ask is if it isn't, it's, it's more about what it says about our town than it is about any individual person. And what are we, how are we harmed by, by expanding the franchise? So, and I haven't really heard anything other than process discussions, but I, you know, so as a member of this town, I, it, 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 it's a, it's something that I think that, that speaks well about the type of community that we want to be, the inclusiveness, the, the progressive, the, you know, the progressive instinct that I think, um, you know, sets Kensington apart, uh, or should set Kensington apart. So the question to me isn't, you know, whether it was 51 or 50% or anything like that. It's what does it say about what, how Kensington feels about its residents? Um, and who um, um, should be able to participate in their own governance? And I, you know, it doesn't harm us. I don't see how it harms us to expand that franchise.
Very well said, Clint. Thank you. Counsel, any other discussion? I don't see any other hands up.
So I think without any more discussion, I, I would anticipate that the, that we will ask our attorney to prepare a charter revision as with, with this language that we proposed and not more restrictive and not last restricted. We can open public comment and make a decision.
Okay. So just, just to remind everyone, uh, if the council, um, it sounds like, um, we're going to move forward with this, that the process is that it would be introduced at the, you know, say in February, then you'd have a hearing in March. And the hearing, um, the record would stay open uh, for a few more weeks for, to get people to get more feedback. And then in April, the uh, council would vote. And then in 30 days, it would take effect. So that would be the process. Um, so I'm, um, is hearing that the council wants to uh, go ahead and have me contact Sue Ellen. Is that correct? Okay. Right. We will continue on. Thank you. All right. All right. So uh, as I stated earlier in the meeting, um, our town manager is not here this evening. Um, I think Alex is uh, prepared to uh, talk about number one. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, in Matt's absence tonight, I'm going to do my best to do him justice and address two agenda items. Uh, the first is that the town's contractor, NZI Construction, is to begin sidewalk improvements this month. I think they would have started already had it not been for the uh, snow that we had. But it should start this month. So some of those improvements include, um, this is on Mitchell, Armory and Fawcett. Um, they include widening the sidewalk, making them ADA compliant. So um, changing the grade of the ramps, making sure that curb cuts and ramps are facing crosswalks uh, instead of into the street, adding textured plates so that uh, the visually impaired can detect a crosswalk and things of that nature. Um, some other, oh, another one is adding a crosswalk to the intersection of Mitchell and Fawcett uh, so that we can make, uh, because of Brookwood School to make it a school zone. And then we can make the speed limit 15 miles per hour there. Uh, and so while this work is being done, our, the town's traffic engineer has recommended, uh, in the past, he gave us three estimates for adding a bump out on Fawcett Street, the intersection of Fawcett and Howard. And uh, the town staff is requesting that we move forward with option two. Uh, as we will already be conducting sidewalk repairs in that area. And we think we'd be good to add the bump out at this time.
Um, Alex, can you share that picture of the bump out? Do you have that available?
Or, yes. Give me one moment. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Mm-hmm. And what is the blue represent? Is that concrete? What is that?
So that actually I, yes, so that would be concrete, but I think this picture represents option one. I don't think it would go all the way back 30 feet behind the stop bar. I think it's supposed to end in option two at the stop bar on Fawcett Street.
And we don't have a picture of option two. Is that correct?
I do not. This is the only one I have. Matt may have one.
Okay. So it would not go as far, uh, because I, I think I understood that what, we would only lose one parking space on Howard Avenue. Is that correct? And I don't think we're losing any on uh, Fawcett because you can't park close to the stop sign anyway.
I, I think that's right. I think if the, if it had gone back 30 feet, I think we would have lost a space. But with the second option, I don't think you're losing a spot on, uh, on Fawcett.
Okay. Okay. Cause I know, um, that was concerning, uh, particularly on Howard Avenue of losing um, a space.
Yes. And, and when I was wa- talking with uh, Joe and Matt when we were walking through it, I think Joe had mentioned uh, making that spot on Howard a loading zone so that there could be temporary parking there.
Okay, good. And the purpose of this, just it's to, what is the purpose?
To increase pedestrian safety there.
Okay. Does it help with the vision for the driver as well? When that, because I know.
So they can see pedestrians who are about to cross. Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. So you're asking for the council to approve, I guess, uh, one or two, excuse me?
Option two.
Option two, okay. But this is actually option one, so.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any questions about this particular recommendation?
Are we going to wait for Matt to come back?
Well, then we would have to wait another month. We can certainly have him send out a picture of option two, but I guess the question would be, uh, what a, if there's any questions on what they're trying to accomplish here.
I have a, I have a quick question if no one else is going to come in. Um, Alex, if I recall, the another request had been to put a three-way stop here, right? From some of the businesses and residents, and it's just not tenable given Joe, our traffic engineer's analysis, right? So, um,
Right.
This is essentially a, you know, the next best solution, as I understand it. So my, I, I don't know if you know the answer. We have to go back to Matt or if, if someone else on the, in the meeting can, can answer this. But does this prevent, would putting this in prevent us from eventually ever putting a three-way stop? Um, and I think the answer is probably no, but I just want to just make sure that that's an option that's not totally removed if this ends up rendering, being rendered ineffective, right? To, to improve pedestrian safety. But, but I understand this is the, kind of like the backup recommendation from what some of the businesses and residents wanted there. Is that correct?
But it's not my understanding that this would, that a three-way stop would be out of the question after this. But, but Matt would probably be able to tell you better than I.
Yeah. He, in previous conversations I had with Matt about this, uh, no, I mean, the, the not going with a three-way stop was driven by uh, engineering standards of, you know, number of trips and the speed of those vehicles from our speed box that we put down that it just didn't warrant a stop. Um, but you know, I asked him the same thing with his bump out. Does that change anything? And he said, no, because this, all it's doing is shortening the distance for pedestrians. Uh, it does, you know, actually improve line of sight for um, the vehicles headed north on Fawcett because it, it should open up some of their sight lane to the right. But that, you know, right now, that just based on our traffic engineer's analysis, not recommending the stop is because it doesn't operationally require it.
Thanks. I think that makes sense.
One other thing though that did, that has been brought up in the past though, is the potential to, along the, the brick wall, the, uh, at the CSX line, to put in a, uh, you know, angled mirror in both directions to try and assist vehicles on Fawcett to be able to see traffic coming, you know, east and west along Howard.
Alex, I think that's a good idea.
Alex, do you know if there's been any analysis on the speeds from the uh, speed? Um, it's not a speed camera, but from the um, traffic?
I'm not sure.
We're not sure. I can find out for you. Okay. It would be nice to know what the average speed is now on that road. So.
Last thing, just kudos to the town for, and Matt and Tracy for pursuing the um, school zone designation. I think that's really helpful, very important because that'll allow us to drop the speed to 15 miles per hour and other safety improvements and around.
Right. And getting, getting a lot of these, um, the, and I don't know why it happened that way, but the um, the handicapped ramps are just pointing in the wrong direction. So getting them realigned is, is really important too. So. Okay, um, let's see. Uh, Joe, is your hand up?
Yes, it is, Mayor Furman. Thank you. Um, good to see Alex take the floor. Very good. Thank you. Um, uh, I heard NZI in this and uh, does that mean that NZI is going to do this work?
They are the contractor. They're the ones that have the contract.
Well, it's a piggyback contract. They, they've never received a, a bid for contract in, from this town.
No, I, I understand that part of it, but they are the ones that we have contracted in this fiscal year to do this work.
Do we have any idea as to how much uh, additional money this is going to cost?
Well, the money had already been budgeted, but in the attachments with the agenda was the um, the financial obligations.
Could you just tell me or I could dig through it myself, but how much is this bump out going to cost?
The estimate for option two is approximately $27,000.
And Alex, is there a timetable for this? Like, once it's begun, is it like few days, a few weeks? Uh, because I could see this potentially disrupting traffic, vehicular traffic along the
I
main street of town.
I can't remember off the top of my head. I want to say it was a couple of days, but I would have to follow up with Matt and get back to you.
And a lot of that, of course, is depicting weather and that's why they haven't started yet.
Um.
So, so let me just jump in. Alex, we don't need Matt. We can, we can tell him to stay on vacation in Colorado. Um, it, I just want to point out that if you look at the estimate for option two, uh, first of all, this was prepared by Joe Cuatro. Um, the, the only reason we are considering it now is because of the other work that is currently done in this area. And so while it is $27,000, the whole point of doing it while we have them unseen is to save some money. And so when you look at the mobilization figure that's at the top of that estimate, that's where we're expecting the savings. That's why we're considering doing this now. Because if we were to bring them in separately for this one-off project, it might be $27,000.
And Alex, my final question was, um, since this illustration is still being shown on the share screen option, can you, can you um, elaborate on how this is going to enhance pedestrian safety? Uh, because of crossing the street at, you know, crossing Howard Avenue just doesn't happen too often, like from the tracks to, to the commercial side of, uh, of the street. So how is the um, pedestrian traffic going to be um, made more safe?
Yeah. So that I would probably be a better question for our traffic engineer. Uh, as far as I know, it's just supposed to create visibility uh, of pedestrians, but uh,
It's visibility and it, it also shortens the distance that a pedestrian has to traverse. So the curbs are closer together.
Okay, okay.
Um, but Dr. Campbell, you made a statement that I cannot let go quietly into this dark night. That people don't cross the tracks and come across Howard Avenue to the business district?
I don't see, I don't see any uh, pedestrian crosswalks there, uh, council member agreements.
Oh, well, we do it in front of the bank legally. But I see your point. Yeah. You don't, you don't cross there. There's the brick wall right there. But I thought you meant that us Northsiders never come down to spend time in the beautiful South side of Kensington.
I kind of, that's a whole nother issue and I'm happy to debate that with you, but no, that's not what I'm raising here. I was just, and, but thank you for, for elaborating or uh, clarifying just how it is a shorter distance for pedestrians. I see it. I got it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Alex, and uh, thank you, Mayor Furman.
Thank you. I'm sorry I can't answer your questions better, but thank you.
Okay. Uh, Jack, is that you?
Jack, you're on mute.
There. Thank you, Alex. That was a great presentation. I particularly liked the idea of putting angled mirrors ac- across the street from Fawcett Street so that the car can see what is coming on Howard Avenue without having to pull a mirror nose into the street. I think that's a really good idea and it's an inexpensive one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Counsel, did you have any um, additional questions about some of the other improvements that were going to be made? Or do we want to give um, make a um, motion that the staff should go ahead and move forward?
I'd recommend that we uh, approve staff to move forward with the bump out in conjunction with other um, uh, sidewalk improvements.
Second.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm just going to go back uh, one step uh, before we go to number two, which is pretty much more of an announcement. But um, I just didn't give the council an opportunity if they wanted to bring something up that wasn't on the agenda. Apologize. So um, we'll start with uh, Bridget. You're in the.
Yeah. So I don't know if everyone saw it, but the county is handing out um, COVID tests at the library. Um, so Monday through Thursday, four to seven at the Kensington um, Park Library. And then Friday through Saturday, two to five. So, and I think you can find that at MOCO, what was it? Sorry, I lost it. MOCO covidtesting.org.
Yeah. Did you say uh, Monday and Thursday, four to seven as well? There's three, three opportunities. Okay.
Monday, Monday through Thursday, four to seven, Friday through Saturday, two to five. Monday, Monday through Thursday, four to seven, Friday through Saturday, two to five.
Okay, and Monday through Saturday, eleven to two.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay. Yeah, but that's not at Kensington.
Oh, okay, then.
That was, that's only at Chevy Chase or, um, Aspen Hill.
Okay, yeah, it's whatever the operating hours of the, um, of the library is, there's, there's, I'm glad you brought it up, there's actually an opportunities for these test kits to come, uh, to be dropped off at municipalities if we wanted to be a pickup um, space. I think, uh, we would need to talk to staff because at least, you know, the, uh, four to seven and the, um, the Saturday hours, um, you know, don't meet with what our staff currently is working, so we would have to figure out how to staff any sort of pickup for the, um, for the kits.
I think you get two per person, two per adult.
Right, and, and one thing they said this morning, um, Josie was, for instance, the four to seven, a lot of that's because that's county-staffed.
Right.
Uh, one of their hopes is, you know, bringing it through the municipalities is that we would just find the hours at work for us. So if it can be done, um, you know, we figure out how to do it in our building, it could just be done between, you know, nine and four. Right? Um, but the, the question is, do we want to, uh, uh, raise our hand as a municipality to make town hall, one of the spaces that the county would drop off a- and restock kits so long as we're willing to, to staff some sort of distribution? And it's for any county resident, right? So obviously, you know, we make notice of it throughout the town, but we just become one more, you know, pin on a map where people can come, uh, if it's convenient to them to pick up these tests.
Well, I'd like to have the opportunity to speak with staff first before we volunteer them. I'm also, um, well, I'm not, you know, the upstairs on the second floor is quite small, so if, uh, you know, if you're inundated with you know, even a hundred people at a time, then you're, how are you, you know, um, you want to keep the staff safe as well, so it'd probably be better to be in the drill hall, the, you know, um, giveaway, somewhere larger, and then exactly what kind of documentation, you know, can somebody come every day to pick up too, or, you know, well, how does that work? And, you know, so um, there's some few questions that need to be answered, so certainly not ruling it out, but I, I would definitely want to speak to staff first on how they manage that. And we do have a small staff, and if one person is absent, then, um, that makes it harder for somebody to say be downstairs to try to, and you probably need at least two people to try to, um, be giving these out, so it may be that um, they could reach out for volunteers, um, to help as well, so. Uh, Leslie, did you have a question?
I have a question, I will, a comment, um, if, if people weren't there today at the Kensington Park Library, um, there were literally hundreds of people, and, um, it went very smoothly, but they had people going through, um, the meeting area that, which is on the downstairs lower level, it threw one door and out another door. Um, the entire parking lot was full, and they were parked all the way down toward, um, Summit and up against everywhere. Um, uh, the parking is, um, at the library is so much greater than what town has to offer. So it might be worth considering how or looking at how the next four days go with the library, because the the facility was so fast, they were so set up, was dedicated, there was no wait. Um, the dispensers were protected, they had plastic shields, and they were literally moving people through. I mean, they opened at four, at four oh seven, we were already in our car leaving the parking lot. So, um, that's what people are going to expect, and it just might be something to consider if the town.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a, um, when you don't have a lot of people to pull from to do that, and if you're doing it for three or four hours, that's a lot to ask for somebody to, to do if you just have two volunteers to be working in that time period. So certainly not ruling it out, but I think there's some logistics that we have to figure out first, so.
And I, I, I was, I was running over there around four thirty or so, so there was a significant line backed up all the way past Beach Drive for people to enter.
Wow.
And while it did go quickly for you, Leslie, um, I just would recommend if you have, are you able to, if you're able to walk, or even bike over, and it's light or whatever, and safe, it may be a, a better, a better way to do it for for here in the town accessing that site.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not easy to get in and out of our, I know at the, um, because I was over on Brainerd, um, walking over that way, and I was wondering, where are all these cars coming out of Brainerd? And now I know why, because you know, you can go in one way into the library and come out another way, you don't have that option at, uh, Town Hall. That's, it's one way in and one way out, unfortunately, so, um. We'll get everybody mad at us for all the backups that we're going to create possibly, so, okay. All right, well, we, I will work with staff to see if we're able to accommodate this, because we can't, we can't turn people away, so you can't just say, oh, well, it's only for town residents, it's for anyone who comes, so we need to make that perfectly clear. This would not just be for town of Kensington residents. So, okay. Um, uh, Connor, did you have anything else? I'm sorry.
I just, yep.
Uh, did you finish, Bridget? I'm sorry. Were you good? Okay, Connor, go ahead.
Uh, no, just one was, um, just wanted to bid a farewell to Phil Curlew, who was the general manager of, of Servpro. He, at the start of the year, he, uh, left his position at Servpro and took another job that is taking him out of the town, but, but Phil also, uh, sat on the Kensington Can Board, was one of uh, the leaders there that helped kick off a bunch of new, uh, events within town, and is just a wonderful, amazing, pleasant guy, and, and because his business is five doors down from my house, uh, at lunchtime, well, he, that's when he went and walked the track at St. Paul Park, so I get to see him almost daily, and I will miss seeing Phil in town, but he, he just added quite a bit, um, to our town, literally in program, but just in his personality and willingness to help, uh, so he will be missed.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Connor. Okay, Darren?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, nothing here, thank you.
Okay, um, I just want to add that, uh, if you received at Bethesda Magazine, uh, this month, the, uh, the number of things that, that the town of Kensington has been mentioned in. A lot of them, um, I believe the, um, the editors, uh, gigs, um, best news spot for live music outdoors, uh, one in the, um, uh, the editors, uh, category, um, so that was really great. And then our farmer's market came in second under Reader's Choice for our farmer's market, and then, of course, frankly pizza, Pink Dots, and, uh, Sunflower Consignment was also listed in there, and I, I think there were a few more, so I think, um, we have a lot to be proud of in our town, that, uh, people, um, outside of our town are, are ranking us, uh, which is really nice, so. And, oh, I did want to mention the Kensington Historical Society, uh, is doing a, um, a speaker program on, uh, January eighteenth at seven thirty, and it's about the nineteen fifty's housing boom, uh, so, and how that, um, the restrictive covenants, um, you know, um, what, and the redlining and things, so I think it's supposed to be a very interesting program, so I hope people will, um, will sign up for that. So that's on January eighteenth. And there's some more things that the Historical Society is doing, and I, and they actually offer, uh, all the, uh, council people, your, your KHS calendar is in your mailbox, so I hope you pick that up. Um, so they were able to get that out this year, which quite, quite proud of them, that they were able to do that in a COVID year where it's so difficult. Okay, all right, well, let's move on then to, uh, the number two. Um, I don't know if Bridget or, uh, Nate, just if you want to mention what's on your agenda, if you have it.
Bridget, you want to go, or you want me to go? Oh, you're raising your hand to go, okay.
I think that was a wave off.
I, I don't know. Tell them when the meeting is.
Yeah, so January nineteenth, seven PM, we'll have our first meeting of the year for the Mobility and Traffic Committee. Um, I don't, we haven't seen a full agenda yet, I think Matt has a couple of items that he wanted to put on for us to consider, but a few things that I know will be on there, one is the, uh, the word, the Pedestrian Bicycling Access Safety Working Group has moved forward from the last council meeting's advice to, to, to do some initial schematic designs for what the Kensington Parkway bike lanes could look like. So they have, as of today, I just saw a rough draft of that, what that would look like, so we're going to present them during that meeting, and I'd encourage anyone who is interested in that issue, as we discussed last time, uh, making this process very open and open to the public, obviously. We'd like the feedback on some of these initial designs. Again, this is just preliminary analysis that would then go to the next stage if we would like to move it forward, um, to, you know, to, to a more detailed design, but this is really cross-sections, giving a sense of what things will look like at the different places along that corridor, um, in Kensington Parkway in, in our town. The other items that we are probably going to talk about are, um, we've had a request from, um, a resident on the North Side to revisit some of the restrictions in the newly annexed area of the town, just to think about whether they're logical, how they, how they make sense, you know, given that we have that newly annexed area, as well as, um, providing a marked crosswalk in, um, uh, across St. Paul Street to, to Kensington Heights Park, that's going to be discussed as well. Um, I don't know, Bridget, if you've identified anything else from, from speaking with Matt, if that's a, a quick preview of the, of the agenda.
No, but I think that there was a, um, I saw online today, they were soliciting some input, I think, for bike lanes in Montgomery County, and I can, I'll find the link and send it out, but, um, just going towards what you were talking about in the previous meeting, um, just getting some more community input.
Great.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so, uh, we'll go down to public appearances. Um, this is anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Jack?
Thank you. I have one astronomical announcement. Next, next Monday, the seventeenth, there'll be a full moon at six fifty-one PM.
I'm sorry, what day again?
Monday, the seventeenth.
Seventeenth. So full moon on the seventeenth, KHS on the eighteenth, and, uh, traffic and, or mobility and traffic meeting on the nineteenth, I got a busy week.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for mentioning the K, KHS meeting. I, I did, I'm not sure I heard you say that it is a Zoom meeting.
It is a Zoom meeting, yes, sorry, it is a Zoom meeting.
Just, just so everybody knows.
Yes, no, it is a Zoom meeting, and, um, I think these things actually do pretty well on Zoom, I like them, uh, that way. So, um, anyway, but, uh, this is, uh, one of a series that they hope to have to be able to offer, so, um, rather than their regular meetings that they'll have, but, uh, this is to branch out, to give more people an opportunity to, uh, participate, so.
Yes. Should be taught.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Joe, hand?
Yes, indeed, Mayor Furman, thank you very much. Um, uh, I was just wondering if there's any, um, developments on the South Side Bridges projects. Uh, there are three bridges that are being, uh, that they're supposed to be worked on and improved, and I just wonder if we have any, uh, updates on, on, on that, on progress related to those, uh, projects?
Uh, they were put out to bid, I don't think the bid date is up yet. Uh, Susan, do you know when that, the final date for bids were due? It's January nineteenth, so they'll be open then. Okay. So, ask in February.
So I, 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 I do have a couple of other related questions to that, though, I just wonder what, what prompted these inspections, uh, which were conducted in twenty nineteen, according to the reports that the town uh, has made available. Do we know what prompted these inspections?
The county inspects them, uh, periodically, I, I don't think it's every year, I think it's every maybe other year. Um, my guess is they might have missed the time in the, during the pandemic in twenty, but, um, they are inspected, uh, on some sort of regular basis.
Yeah, the, the reports date to twenty nineteen, all three of them, all three bridges, uh, on the south side of town, I just wondered what uh, kept the town from moving more expeditiously on these three bridges, um, because if anything, the conditions have not improved on, on any of them since May and June or November of twenty nineteen, when the, when the reports were conducted, when the inspections were conducted and the reports were written, uh, pointing out that there was, you know, some serious flaws on each, each of the three. I just wonder what, uh, why we're moving now instead of sooner on this.
Well, I can, uh, just because they inspected it on the nineteenth, I, we don't get the, um, the inspection reports have a delay, so I'm not sure, I'd have to check with Matt when they actually came in, but they don't come in the day they're expected. There's a long process in getting those done, and then, um, there was a pandemic going on in twenty twenty, and we weren't sure what kind of money we were going to have, so.
Well, there's still a pandemic going on, and there's still.
Well, I think we're in a little different situation, Joe, everybody's open now, things are moving along, and yet we're being careful.
We're, we're worse off than, in, in many respects, in terms of numbers, in terms of hospitalizations, uh, you know, this pandemic rages on.
There's a difference when people are staying home and not coming to work, and now people are back to work despite the fact that there is COVID. People aren't back to work.
So, so, so you're blaming the uh, slow process on repairing these three bridges on the pandemic, is that essentially?
I'm blaming the fact that there was not an opportunity to do it in twenty twenty, Joe, this is a long process too, this is why you don't, you seem to always want to put things out for bid, putting things out for bid don't happen the next day, there's a six to nine-month process in getting engineering reports, pulling it all together, getting the estimates, it just doesn't happen overnight. I'm sorry, I don't like that, but that's the way.
I, I'm asking a simple, straightforward question.
And I'm giving you a straightforward answer.
Well, it has nothing to do whether I like it or not, I'm just trying to get a better understanding why it has taken the town so long to move on these three bridges on the south side of town, that, you know, have, have serious problems.
Because the bridges were not going to fall down, we felt pretty good.
And, and you say it's the pandemic. And I'm saying there's still a pandemic, and so I, that doesn't, that doesn't sound like a, uh, a persuasive explanation as to the three.
Well, I'm sorry you don't like the explanation.
No, okay, I'm sorry too, because the explanation is not that persuasive.
Well.
On another matter, on another matter, not on the agenda for tonight, every year in Kensington is a local election year, and, uh, I'm just wondering whether you, Mayor Furman, or the two council members whose term is up this year plan to run for reelection?
How could I leave you, Joe?
I'm sorry?
How could I leave you?
I guess that's a yes, you're going to run again? I mean, you are the all-time leading vote getter in Kensington history, Bridget, I don't see why you would not want to, you know, build on that reputation.
Dr. Campbell, I'm tired.
It's like Christmas, the question comes earlier and earlier each year.
Now, next year I won't ask it in January than, uh, Councilmember Bartram, it's either January or February, but it's a good question, it's a legitimate question, and, and, and why not? You know, if people don't have an answer yet, that's understandable. But people who've, who've done well in, in this town in terms of running for elected office have started early, and I think some of the, some of the, um, more popular vote-getters recognize the importance of starting their campaigns early, going door-to-door months in advance. I'm just curious to know whether, you know, Bridget and, and Nate are, are planning to run for reelection, and the mayor as well?
I don't know, Joe, we'll see. Six months away.
Bye.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Furman?
I'm with Nate, we'll see.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Furman.
You're welcome. Uh, Leslie?
Um, hi, okay, so, um, over the past year, we've had two big construction projects, one on Metropolitan and one on, um, um, Knolls, and both have kind of highlighted an absence of pedestrian safety. Um, one thing is when they block a sidewalk, they put the sign right there when the sidewalk gets blocked. And so if you're walking down the sidewalk, you don't see that until you're pretty close to the sign in a lot of cases. In the case of Dietrich and Knolls, if you're coming from Summit, walking up the sidewalk on that side, and then you hit Dietrich and find the sidewalk is closed, you had nowhere to go. Um, because there is absolutely no pedestrian sidewalk anywhere in that area, and on Metropolitan, same thing. It's a long walk down from seven eleven, down on that side of the street, which people will do if they're just even going to the bus stop. which people will do if they're just even going to the bus stop. So when that sign is just placed arbitrarily, it makes it difficult. Not so much crossing Metropolitan as it did Knolls. I'm wondering if the Development Review Board could look at that matter and perhaps highlight it so that there is a more pedestrian safety location for those sidewalk-close signs. Right now, I think they're just hitting the end of the block, sticking the sign in, and that's it. And also, when there are signs that are put in the ground and then they're removed, nobody goes back around and fills in the holes. And so we've got that along Metropolitan, where they had big four-by-four poster signs.
They haven't filled those back in yet?
I haven't filled them in.
Okay.
We can get them to do that, to your recommendation for DRB. Happy to take it up and take a look at it. I know there are a couple of competing items in there. One is there are, I learned this, right? I didn't know this, but there are guidelines as to where signage is to go, how many feet from, depending on what the signage is, if it's for a detour, if it's for closing a sidewalk. So we've just got to make sure that they're following what is required for the type of closure or detour that they are doing. The other one I know, just specific to Metropolitan, from working with the local businesses there, they, you know, they knew that sidewalk closures were going to happen. They also knew detours were going to happen. They also asked the town very much to do whatever we could to highlight that those businesses were still open, right? Because you could still access them even with the detours. And especially those things that were, you know, catering or food, or, you know, the swimming shop. You know, they wanted to make sure that people knew that their businesses were not closed. So those things are out there, but happy to help review that, especially as additional projects come forward, that just to make sure that they are adhering to what is required of them.
Okay. Metropolitan you could live with because it was a two-lane road, and with the four-way stop, it made all the difference in the world. So that's why it wasn't so noticeable. When the Knolls building went under construction, it became a pattern, and then you realized that they weren't focusing on pedestrians. They were really just trying to get the sign out to say it's closed. And that's my point. Even if it has to go one place somewhere, at the point where a person has to make a decision on whether to stay on that side of the road or cross over, there should be a sign that says, if not sidewalk closed ahead, something to indicate that they're not, they're just going to have to walk back. So that doesn't work.
As somebody who lives on Dietrich, it was a total pain in the neck while they had the sidewalk closed, because you're right. I mean, you didn't know it was closed until you came upon it, and for most people, they just ended up walking down Knolls. You know, even women in strollers, which was just like, why are you doing that? But because they used to turn around and walk back down to where it's safe, which would be down there there at Summit and Knolls, where you can cross at a light. You know, that's the safest place, but, you know, people want to take the short way. And so, yeah, no, I agree with you 100%. A lot of it is different contractors are coming in and they're doing, you know, they're working on different things, and then they close it, and it's it's still their responsibility. So I think you're right, they need to do a better job. And that will happen as well when they do the construction on the shopping center at Connecticut and Pliers Mill. And they've got to figure out a way to make it safe, because otherwise people are going to be crossing six lanes of Connecticut Avenue, and that's not good.
And there are some sidewalks, even in that location, that weren't identified on the drawings. There is that, a sidewalk from the island. There are three different sidewalks that go off that little island. And the one
Where are we now? I'm sorry. Are Knolls are on?
You were talking about the Connecticut project coming. And yes, because they also didn't identify the existing three crosswalks that come off that little island there. There are three, so a lot of work needs to be done with pedestrian safety in there.
I mean, I'd like to put the responsibility more on the county because they have the manpower to do it than we do, particularly, you know, because a lot of times the work is being done after hours or early morning when we don't have someone who can do the enforcement. But I think, yeah, I think they need to, and the town can do a better job on the next project, for sure.
Why don't we try this? Because I think that, you know, these are not, nothing is regulated to this level of specificity. State Highway is concerned with putting up signs that address cars for the most part. Next time we see a problem or an obstruction that, you know, affects sidewalks and pedestrians, let's try the 3-1-1 system. I mean, I've had success with it. I know it's county, but they'll put you to the right state person. And let's just give it a shot and try it, because I think it's so specific to a sidewalk or a project that we don't know how things are going to shake out. A lot of things that when we toured the Knolls Silver Creek Building, we learned of a lot of things that came up that just weren't anticipated, and I think we've got to sort of adapt as we see issues. That's my suggestion.
Well, I'm hoping they take the signs down. I don't see any reason why they still have the signs saying the sidewalk is closed right now, because it looks like they, I think they've finished everything in the front, so it's confusing right now. So I'd like to probably see if we can't find out why those signs are still sitting there, or sometimes they're just laying there instead of, you know, they just need to get them out of there. I believe there's still some concrete work on the sidewalk in front of the building next door that needs to be. There's asphalt where they did some utility work, so that needs to be repaired as well. So that'll close it off again. So. Okay. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Jack, do you have your hand up again, or?
Yes, I do. Discussing the construction on Knolls reminds me, did the council ever decide what to do with the $100,000 from that project?
We've not revisited that.
Okay, thank you.
I think we had five years, something like that, five years, yeah. Okay. All right. Anybody else for public appearances? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, so we're going to move down to ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. Since Matt's not here, I've asked Darren to open the public hearing.
All right. I don't know if there's a way to formally do that. I'm going to say, you know, we're going to have a public hearing on ordinance number O-3-2021, an ordinance of mayor and town council to amend the charter, the code, rather, to reduce speeds along town-maintained streets from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour.
Okay. Typically, you know, if we were in person, we would have people sign up if they wanted to provide any testimony for this hearing. So, but you can just raise your hands if you would like to make a comment. Leslie?
I support the change, and primarily, it's because of the enforcement level. 10, 12 miles over the speed limit is when somebody might be subjected to getting a ticket. So you'd really not left with much choice, but to keep the speed limit as low as possible. Because in a 25 mile an hour zone, 35 to 40 is just too fast. So I support the 20 mile an hour zone. At least it keeps it down to 30.
Thank you. So anyone else want to comment? Joe?
Thank you, Mayor Furman. I see no reason to object to a lowered speed limit. My concern is, as you may know or remember, is how is this going to be enforced? And the measure that is before the public hearing makes no substantive discussion about enforcement. And the reason this is such an important issue is that there are other measures in town, particularly restrictions on left turns at certain times of day during rush hours. On such streets, at such intersections as Frederick Avenue and Kent Street, Frederick Avenue and Wake Street, Kensington Parkway and Kent Street, there are restrictions on making left turns at all of those intersections. And yet motorists typically scoff at these, at these restrictions, do not really pay much attention to them. And enforcement tends to be very limited. So, you know, I think it's a great idea to lower the speed limit in the town, but I think it's an empty gesture, or has the potential to be an empty gesture if there is no enforcement mechanism that's behind it. And I see nothing that's discussed in the in the document that's before the public hearing that lays that out. And without enforcement, this is not going to be terribly well-respected, I'm afraid, given the examples that we see elsewhere in town on the left-turn restrictions that are that are flagrantly and blatantly disregarded by motorists. So I don't know. I have my doubts to the effectiveness of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Thanks, and thanks for considering this measure. I'm really supportive of it. I think lowering speed limits is one tool in the toolbox, in addition to geometry and road design and traffic calming measures and enforcement. But the recent studies over the last few years have shown that reducing speed limits alone, absent any other changes, does result in lowered speeds and fewer injuries and fewer crashes. And I think that's justification enough to do the same here and then work to improve enforcement and road design in parallel. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody else want to speak, make a comment? Leslie?
I'll go back to the comment on enforcement, and I think that it's public hearing. Primarily, if it goes forward, it should be supported by town residents, and there's a lot to be said for town residents as they drive through the town to follow the speed limits, because if you're going 20, or if you're going 30, whatever it is, you're causing everybody behind you to do the same. And there's certainly enough of us that cut through on Connecticut, et cetera. I think if it moves forward, that it's as much a part of residents' responsibility as police officers to be there. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Dawn?
Thanks. I just had a couple of questions about this. Is Connecticut Avenue considered Kensington-maintained, or is that still a county?
That's a state highway. We have no control over speed limits on state highway. This is town streets only.
Gotcha. And are there specific areas of concern that drove the ordinance? I'm all for safe driving in the neighborhood. I actually live on Kent, and I'm very happy that we have speed bumps that help control the speed here, but I'm just wondering, is this being driven by certain areas of concern where speed bumps could be as effective as they are in Kent?
Darren, did you want to take that, since this was your, this was something that, your initiative? So I don't want to speak for you.
Yeah, I don't think there was any particular road where we said we need to change. As we looked at the, just for historical, we received a request from residents on the 3,700 block of Faragut, asking for a lower speed limit. We talked to the traffic engineer. In light of the width, we agreed to lower the speed limit from 25 to 20. We also had this data box that collected speeds, and we put it up on a poll before and after. You know, we did two things on that street. We did a speed pump, and we lowered the speed limit. We added a speed pump, so that there were two. Based on the data that we gathered from that box, it showed a lowered speed limit. You know, I don't think we can get into how much of it was attributable to the second speed pump versus the signs, but that led us to sort of look and notice nationwide that, you know, there's a lowering of speed limits. DC is going to lower speed limits on its residential roads from 25 to 20. Seattle is doing the same. And it just seems to be a trend to bring things down. So I don't think there's a specific road that we were concerned about, but I think that in general, we felt like, as some people have noted tonight, you know, if you lower it to 20, people are going to exceed it by less overall than if it were still at 25. So that's my motivation. And so we'll see where things fall.
Okay. I appreciate the explanation. I wasn't aware of any issues that were out there. I can understand on Faragut. I actually think on certain streets, especially like Kent, where there are no sidewalks, the speed humps keep the traffic down very effectively. So you know, I'm not exactly sure this is ultimately needed. I also don't think it's harmful. But I appreciate the explanation there. And maybe this is a policy you would consider for streets where there are issues versus the whole town as well, given what you've learned on Faragut. Thanks.
Thank you. Joe, is your hand back up, or is that an old hand?
No, it's a new hand. I'm just trying to puzzle through the question of consistency here, because if Connecticut Avenue remains, whatever it is, 30 or 35 miles an hour, then people going through the main thoroughfare of the town are going to be going through at one speed, and then on other streets that the town polices ostensibly, it'll be less than that, it'll be 20 miles an hour. I don't know. I mean, does that pose any potential problems in terms of respecting this revised and lowered speed limit if people are allowed, if you will, to go one speed on on some parts of town roads, or roads in town, and then they're expected to go at a lower speed elsewhere in town? I don't know. I'm just seeing the potential here for some inconsistency.
Well, I think there's kind of a big difference between a six-lane road and a and a one- or two-lane residential street. I mean, that's typically.
No kidding. There is a big difference, clearly, obviously.
And you should know, if you went to driving school, that there is a different speed limit on a highway versus a residential street, so.
Yeah, but I ask that because Connecticut is such a major thoroughfare in town, and it bisects this town. And, you know, not everybody's going 35 all the time on that street, of course, but I think you can see the logic of the question, that you're not being able to drive a consistent speeds in different parts of town at different times on different streets. I don't know. It may not be an issue. Just by grade.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands. I don't see anything in the chat. Council, do you have any more comments to make?
The only comment I would make, because it has come up, there are those roads that we control, which is what this ordinance is is dealing with, a change to our code and the roadways that are under the control of the town of Kensington, and then there are the roadways that we don't. We have a number of state highways. It's not, I mean, Connecticut has been mentioned, but we have Metropolitan, and we have Knolls. We have other roadways that are higher speeds that are outside of our control. But my comment is, that doesn't mean we're leaving them untouched. It's just that we have to work in partnership with State Highway Administration on those roadways that are S.H.A. So we, you know, we have engaged S.H.A. in that discussion, that, you know, desire to reduce the speed limits on the state highways within our incorporated town borders. It's just we cannot do that unilaterally, and that process continues. So we are still engaged in that, but this is just to look at those that we can take action on ourselves.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I don't see any other hands, so the, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, so uh, I don't see any other hands, so um, the, oh, I'm sorry, Dawn, go ahead.
Can I ask a clarifying question of Connor there?
Yeah, what do you got?
So Connecticut Avenue is not included in that, but has the town of Kensington put in a request to lower the speed limit?
Yes, we've asked, a study has to be done. And so we have engaged S H A, um, and and I know I can see Nate perking up because there's other things that are coming through some of our, our recent designation changes. But we have gone to them historically several times, but, but acutely very recently and and do plan so to reengage them again to say, listen. We understand that you are in the business of moving vehicles. But how roadways are being used is changing, especially within the county. There is a, a desire to have multimodal transportation to change how these roadways operate. And outside of just reconstructing the entire roadway, as you, you, you talked about. I mean, they state highway even came out this October with a great presentation that said, we need to lower speeds. But there's only three ways to do it. You lower the posted speed limit. Or you, you, you change the physical construction of the road. You narrow lanes, you, you make bigger boulevards and and that's very costly and and takes a lot of time. So we are talking to S H A right now about ways to lower the speed limit.
And part of that is being designated an urban area. Um, that will help lower the speed limit. So I know we're, we're working on that angle as well because, I mean, obviously, when you come into Kensington, you've now reached an area that is um, got higher density and more pedestrian traffic. So we're looking at having it designated as an urban area. But there's, the state highways coming out with their corridor study that hopefully will be um, available to the public.
Uh, this, this week, I believe.
Week, yeah, so that will be an opportunity to see what their study, uh, and it starts at DC line and goes all the way.
To the split with the university.
But.
University, yeah.
Right, so um, we'll see the recommendations. My guess is a lot of those recommendations will require a study, which means we'll take more time. But um, I know uh, Chevy Chase View and the town of Kensington are very interested in, in what the study is going to be recommending.
So to Dawn and even.
Town, what would the? What would lowering the speed limit to 25 or 30 uh, at Pliers Mill and Knowles do to the traffic that's already backed up um, in that area? And and I, I just, I would. I, I mean, I'd love to see what the, the traffic experts would tell us of that, whether that would actually help? Or would that actually make that area even more congested?
I think, I think the thing you need to remember when, if you're going, if it's 20 miles an hour and you're going to go 25, you're not going to get a ticket. You don't get a ticket until what? You're going almost 12, 12 miles over the speed limit? So if it's 35, now you're at 47. You can go 47 before you get a ticket. So by lowering it, now you're going at the speed we want you to go at, or at least the reasonable speed. I mean, it's kind of a dumb system, but that's how it works.
Right, so.
Right, but what, what is, I'm just asking what that's going to do to the congestion that's already there at Pliers Mill and Knowles and that whole section. I, I can't imagine it's going to help it though, because.
But it's not going to hurt it because if it's already congested, the vehicles aren't moving anyways. Right, so the posted speed limit could be 65 if, if it's congested.
They're not moving, I get it.
The point of lowering the speed limits is, is more so about pedestrian bicycle safety. We have sidewalks right next to the roadway. We're trying to encourage multimodal transportation. We have uh, sharrows or sherits, depending on what you, you know, the idea that along Connecticut Avenue, bikes are permitted in the, the rightmost lane and they are, the signage there to encourage that, hey, bicyclists have the right to be in that lane. Even though it's, it would be, it's a scary road to, to ride on right now. But the data behind it and where the engineering that, that S H A shared in October was. What they know is that a, when a vehicle comes in contact with a pedestrian or a bicyclist at 40 to 45 miles an hour, there is a 10% survival rate of the pedestrian or cyclist. If you can lower that speed limit by 10 miles an hour, you can increase the percentage likelihood of survival by almost 80%. And so the whole idea behind this is, and it is perverse to say, but I think the mayor captured well. I wish by lowering it to pick a number, 25 miles an hour, all vehicles would travel that, that they won't. But what they do see is there is a correlation between what you lower it to, the actual moving speed will also lower in, in an almost one to one correlation. So right now, a posted 35 mile an hour zone, which is a, a, a good majority of Connecticut Avenue, sees average speed rates of about 47 miles an hour. If we reduce it by five or 10 miles an hour, we'll actually reduce the actual travel speed from 47 to actually closer to 35, which just makes uh, any type of accident that occur more survivable.
Okay. Um, okay. Yeah, so I think Connor, Tracy, Darren explained everything really well. I just wanted to, just a very minor clarification on something you said, Tracy, is that I'm not sure we're actually pushing for urban designation for Ken, the town of Kensington. What, what that refers to was the context-driven design standards that S H A uses. And they try to kind of box in and categorize every, you know, I guess, every square foot of, of, of the, of the state and put them into six categories. It's only the urban category that is now currently, as I understand it, qualified for 25 miles per hour or lower for speed limits.
Yeah, it was the means in which, it was one of the means in which the speed limit lowered.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because I don't think you're asking us to be called like an urban center in, in general. I was just trying to find.
No, I think that I, I maybe, I'll do a Ted Cruz here. I was a little clumsy in my words. Uh, it's more.
I didn't want to scare people, yeah, because, because.
It was more of, that was one of the means in which we were told to get the speed limit lowered was to be designated as an urban.
Basically, yeah, but I think that there is another route or two routes. And that is the, the, the study you just mentioned, Tracy, the, the MD 185 corridor study that will be released this week. They may, for example, they may recommend a reduction in speed. If they do that, that is basically S H A saying, you know, that we should do that. And that's not aligned with the context-driven design. So there, I think there are other workable ways around that without having to go through pushing for urban designation, according to S H A. Um, in addition to that, this TLC grant that we have and that we're implementing along the Connecticut corridor for the town is going to make recommendations as well that link with this corridor study that S H A has. And one of them, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm sure will be something related to speeds as well. So the more fodder we have to push for reducing them outside of the context-driven design standards, I think the, the, the stronger case we'll be able to make.
Yeah, the biggest thing is um, the, the state highway, even after the um, the um, document is published. You know, they will have to study whatever the recommendations are. So it, unfortunately, these things happen, uh, it's a long period of time. So it won't, you know, a couple of years is, you know, we'll be lucky to, um, I mean, you look how long it's taken them. I think this summer they're finally going to fix the intersection at Connecticut and Saul where the doctor was um, very badly injured. I think that's finally going to happen this summer, they said, so. Um, and that was at least three years ago when he was hit, so this takes a while. Um, we've wandered uh, from our public streets of 20 miles an hour in the hearing onto state highway, which is okay. Um, but um, did you have another comment, Joe?
Yeah, um, thanks, Mayor Furman. Just, just a quick uh, question or clarification for Councilmember Crimmins. Uh, in addition to Connecticut Avenue, has the town requested that the other streets that you mentioned, Metropolitan, Knowles, uh, also have lower speed limits or was it confined only to Connecticut Avenue?
My computer's telling me I'm, I'm mute. Um, the, again, we've already engaged S H A on this. I was in the process of drafting a letter for the council to take up and send. Um, when we were made aware that the S H A was going to be publishing their study of the, specifically the Connecticut corridor. Uh, but you know, they said that as a corridor, it also talks a little bit about the roadways that are going to touch it. So, you know, we've, to use a terrible traffic pun, we've tapped the brakes on that letter until this study comes out this week. We will review it and then see if we want to uh, amend our letter. I will tell you that it was to have S H A review all state highways that traverse within the town. You know, it doesn't need to just be Connecticut. Um, so the driving force for me behind, besides the science and the traffic data and the, and the, the um, the presentations that S H A had put out was also just the, the equitable nature of what I see along 355 in Bethesda is they lowered it. And along Georgia Avenue in Wheaton, they lowered those speed limits. And Veers Mill in Wheaton, they lowered those speed, speed limits. And along uh, you know, other state highways nearby, they've taken those steps and they had yet to do it on the Connecticut Avenue corridor. But I, I think the last we heard was the study was coming out Tuesday or Wednesday, so it could be out tomorrow morning for all I know. Um, but we'll dig into that and then I imagine uh, you'll, if you come back the same bat time next month, you'll probably see something about the S H A roadways on our agenda, once we see the corridor study.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Furman.
Mm-hmm, all right, uh, I don't see any other hands. And I think I just need a motion to um, not close the hearing, but to keep it open until the February 11th, Friday, February 11th.
So I move that uh, we keep the public hearing open for ordinance number O dash 03 dash 2021 until 4:00 PM on Friday, February 11th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Um, I will remind everyone that our next meeting in February is the 14th. We were reminded that that's Valentine's Day, but our council wants to meet, so, um, and then, so uh, it is not a real holiday, so uh, we will be meeting on the 14th uh, in February. Um, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
All right, thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Everybody.
Have a good one.
Alex, great job tonight.
Good job, Alex.
Thanks, guys. It was fun, but I hope Matt doesn't plan to miss any more.
Does anybody want to see Brooks? I've got Matt's dog sitting on my, on my chair.
He's well behaved.
He's very well.